Great. Good evening and welcome to the Goffstown Budget Committee's Public Hearing. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberate and just as for all.
All right. Thank you all very much. As you can see behind me, we have the agenda for the evening. Can everyone hear me? I know it's a little bit of a big room here, but we'll continue on. So we'll go over the school side and then we'll take questions on that part of the budget. We'll go into the town side and we'll also have presentations on two warrant articles that this committee did not hear presentations on before. And then we'll go into questions about the budget as a whole. And then we'll close the public hearing and we'll move into recommendations for the warrant article and then those will move to the deliberative session. And then from there, those recommendations made that night will move on to the ballot. So to get started here, we have the proposed operating budget for the Goffstown School District. If at any time it doesn't sync up behind me, just give me a shout. So proposed 2021 Goffstown School District operating budget is $45,662,226. Up there you'll see a graph going over the general fund, the food service special revenue, and then total budget numbers for this school budget. So proposed amount to be appropriated through financial year 21 through warrant article two, which is the total operating budget, is that $45 million number I gave before. It's an increase of $958,360 or 2.1% over the current budget. Moving on, you'll see some revenue projections here. Revenues continue to decline sharply mainly because of decreasing state and federal aid. However, New Boston has substantially increased its enrollment in Goffstown schools. As on the town side, school budget assumes a half percent increase in towns valuation. Conservative estimate that has been surpassed in several years. Actually, you'll also see there's some changes here due to changes in the state budget that are reflected. So there's one-time fiscal capacity disparity aid in the amount of $1.3 million roughly around there. There's also a slight decrease in swept and inadequacy. So we end up with somewhere around 1.2, somewhere between 1.2 and 1.3 total new dollars this year that come from the state that's a one-time revenue. All right, moving on. General fund portion of the budget. So you'd see the current two proposed, once again, difference of $935,911 increase. Proposed fiscal year 20 to 21 general fund budget represents a 2.2% increase. Proposed budget does not include the GESS contract that's in warrant article three that we'll go over when we get there. Here you'll see the default budget. So the difference between the proposed and the default budget for this year is $389,629. So if the school budget was to fail on the warrant article, we would go into default budget and that's the number that's listed up there. So going over what accounts for the budget increases. Student population is increasing at Glen Lake and Maple Ave. Study or slight decrease at other schools. Increased special ed costs. We also have personnel costs, salaries, taxes, benefits for both regular education and special education. We have voter-approved contracts for teachers. Health insurance costs of 3.1%. Transportation costs, regular and special education transportation. And information technology. There's some equipment that's over 10 years old that we'll be replacing. There's also some data security and privacy adjustments due to legislation that was passed and some newer regulations there relating to data privacy and whatnot. So we'll need to make adjustments. Jared, was there anything you want to add there?
No, those are the major ones. And of course, we can always look at the meeting minutes from our meetings to look at any specific items.
Here you'll see a chart that goes over enrollment. I won't go over that piece by piece there, but you can kind of take a moment to look over the numbers there. A lot of what we've talked about in this budget cycle is the increasing enrollment at Glen Lake. And you'll hear later about a warrant article related to the space in facility concerns that comes along with that increased enrollment at Glen Lake. Jared, is there anything else you'd like to add there?
The enrollment situations, the school board itself is also looking at a building committee, but that's more of a long-term approach to try to satisfy some of our enrollment needs. So even though that we're talking later on in one of our warrant articles about adding to our Glen Lake school for our kindergarten programs, there's an overall strategic initiative to look at total space needs for the school districts within Goffstown.
Thank you. Moving on, we have the Glen Lake general fund. Current budget year is $1.9, roughly around $1.9 million. Proposed is $2,033,184. It's an increase roughly of 4%. A lot of that has to do with the increased enrollment at Glen Lake. Also has to do with the special ed costs related to the preschool program that we have there and the increased cost of supplies, equipment related to additional students. So as you can see, a lot of ramifications coming from the increased enrollment at Glen Lake in this budget. Moving on, Maple Avenue general fund. Current budget year is roughly $5.2 million. Proposed budget is actually a decrease of 0.6%, largely has to do with the student enrollment projected to, we have the student enrollment projected to increase from 490 to 536 based on current kindergarten enrollment. Additional books and printed media to address increase in students. Increased cost of testing, but there are some staffing changes have resulted in a lower budget request for this fiscal year. Moving on to Bartlett Elementary. Current budget is $2,649,794. Proposed budget, we have $2,709,643, which is an increase of 2.3%. We have increases in wages and benefits related to voter-approved teacher contracts. We have purchased sound amplification system for student needs. Replace one classroom of furniture. This is, we're doing this on a cycle. It's roughly around $5,000 cost. And minor increases in science kits and consumable special education supplies. Is there anything else you'd like to add there, Jared?
The big thing about this is people are probably questioning about the sound amplification system. This is something that we're trying to use for specific students. That is one of our sped items. Again, this is so that we can have the best learning that we can for those students with needs. So this is why we do have at least outline item called out specifically so that people understood that.
And in case you're unaware, Jared is our school board representative on the Budget Moving on to Mountain View Middle School. Current budget year, we have $9,819,698. Proposed budget is $10,106,594 or an increase of 2.9% due to increases in wages and benefits related to the contracts that we've talked about before. Modest increase in supplies to reflect current costs. Increase in costs of regular and special education testing. Regular education books and printed materials, $5,043 for science and language arts. And increased propane by $5,000 and decreased electricity by $10,000 to reflect actual costs. That's something that Scott Gross has been doing a lot of work on, on trying to get our actuals closer. And that's reflected there. Move on. Goffstown High School. Current budget year is $14,687,924. Proposed budget, we have $14,369,373 or a decrease of 2.2%. There's contractual obligations, health insurance increases, and teacher retirement. We also have more of the sound amplification systems that we talked about before. Building grounds increase of $61,799 driven by increase in propane budget of $50,000. Water and sewer of $5,000 and other preventative maintenance previously underbudgeted. Transportation costs reflect a 10% increase based on increased class. And replace the computer lab that is 10 years old with $25,000 cost for that. Jared, is there anything you'd like to address there?
Yeah, just as many of our constituents know within the town, New Boston does send their students to our schools at the middle school level for grade seven and eight as well as our high school. So even though there might be an increase or some numbers, New Boston has increased their enrollment to our schools. So that is a revenue source for us as well as we look at this and move forward.
Looking at the district general fund budget. Current year, we have $8,221,582. The proposed budget is $9,081,290. It's an increase of about 10.5%. A lot of that is special education, out-of-district placements, charter school services, and professional services are all wrapped up in there. There's also server virtualization, which is information and data security. And there's some equipment that's over 10 years old. SAU services. We're looking at two years of increases in costs as current fiscal year increase was not budgeted for. Jared, is there anything you'd like to?
Yeah, one thing to note is you do see a large increase in this line, in this group. One of those factors is that we took a lot of our special individuals, special paraprofessionals out of the individual school systems and brought them into the SAU budget. That's why you do see an increase here. And that's why we did have a little bit of a decrease at our other schools. And this is to make sure that there was greater understanding and you wouldn't be able to pinpoint specific individuals and what those increases would be for those individuals as well. So this is just, again, taking people from the high school level and bringing them to the SAU level, or the middle school, or the elementary schools.
Oh, and then we just have some continued subtext. Sorry about that. Student transportation, increased costs related to server provider expected increases. Technology department facility changes and staffing resulted in increased wage and benefits. Contractual changes related to co-curricular stipends. IT moved all computer, printer, and IT repairs to one district line. So looking at the tax impact history here, last year's estimated Looking at this here. Last year's estimated tax rate impact for 2019. I don't know. Are the numbers?
That was for last year as just as reference. You can keep going if you want.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, Scott. Well, keep going.
Because of the $10 million, then that's why.
Yeah. Continue on. For proposed budget, current tax rate is $13.28. Proposed tax rate 13.89. So that's a 61 cent increase per thousand. For the default budget, that number would be 13.66, which would represent a 38 cent increase. And then moving on into the warrant article costs here. We have a GESS contract and we also have the kindergarten modular project. I'll let Jared take a crack at going over those projects here.
Thank you. And I do apologize beforehand. Cole just said, Jared, can you do this presentation for me? So I might pick up a little bit and ask for your apologies. As we move forward, what's listed on our estimated based on, I want to make sure that we're on the right one. Estimated based on conservative revenue estimates. So we're actually talking about our GESS contract. And the GESS, for a reminder, is a collective bargaining agreement between the Goffstown School Board and the Goffstown Educational Support Staff Association. And what you'll see on article number three is this is an increase for the fiscal year 2021 of $226,951. An increase in the year 21 spanning 22 to $226,728. And for fiscal year 2022 to 2023, an estimated increase of $203,916. And that's above what's currently within our default budget. For those numbers for the first year, as you will see, it's a 12 cent tax increase per $1,000 assessed if this is approved. And that is a three-year contract, as I stated before. Warrant article number four is something that we're calling the kindergarten modular classroom. This is to raise and appropriate $900,000 for a four-classroom modular addition, if you will, to the Glen Lake school system. And this is really driven through some of our space needs. One thing to note about this is that this money will come from the fiscal capacity disparity aid with no direct tax impact. I want to make sure that I stress that as part of our conversation. So this special warrant article is in addition to receiving that $1.3 million that Mr. Chair did provide to us earlier. And we will only move forward with this if the voters approve and we do receive that money from the state and that one-time disparity aid. Again, this is no direct tax impact if this is approved.
Thank you, Jared. Moving on, we also have warrant article five. If you'd like to discuss that.
Yeah, so warrant article number five is a deposit of $200,000 from any unassigned fund balance into an existing capital reserve fund that will be used for existing capital assets. Last year, the town voted to create a capital reserve fund for the school board. This is used as a planning tool so that we can use our, what is it that we call that? The CIP. So that we can use CIP to replace our capital assets over time. As we know, things sometimes break. And this money is exclusively to those items that are either on CIP or other capital assets that would be on CIP that may not actually meet that $35,000 threshold. But this is a ask to place that $200,000 into the capital reserve fund so that we could use it for replacement of assets.
Great. Thank you, Jared. Moving on, we have the default budget discussion. And I invite Scott Gross to the microphone to talk a little bit about the default budget.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The default budget for the school district is prepared by the school board, unlike the Budget Committee. So in the Goffstown community, the default budget is prepared by the school district and the select board accordingly. I just wanted to give you just a brief overview of the default budget. Essentially, it is the current year's budget plus any contractual obligations that the district has. And so one good example is teacher salaries. Last year, there was a contract for our teachers. The voters approved that. So those salary increases and insurance cost increases would be part of the default budget. The salary increases that are not approved by the voters, and those could be the administrator level, we have several positions, we have quite a few that are not part of a collective bargaining agreement, those are not part of the default. Those are new spending dollars, part of that $389,000 that you saw, the difference between the default and the proposed. The other responsibility that the school board and the select board have is that they have to remove one-time expenditures. So we review the budget. And we took a look at all of the current line items that we have in our budget for this year. And we did remove certain items. I'll give you a good example. We had to replace basketball winches at Mountain View Middle School. You almost had a near accident there, so we replaced those. But that was a one-time event. It wasn't like it was a cycle. So that $15,000 gets removed from the default budget. Conversely, if we have a program where we are replacing one or two classrooms of furniture every single year, then that would be part of a cycle. It is part of our current budget and it would be part of the default. So that's how we arrived at it. There are slides here, but you don't need to really kind of, you can go through them quickly. The State Department of Revenue has a form which I fill out. The school board reviewed that form at their last meeting. They're going to be, they authorized me to submit it and they'll be signing off on it. And that'll be posted along with the warrant. And the state form, which is, I think it's, I think people can see that online. It just delineates the budget, but it's based upon function. And the function of the school district budget, there's about 15, 16 lines and it's big. So it's like regular education is one function, special education, administration, transportation, you name it. And we have to, I have to put in why there were increases or decreases. And for the most part, the increases are related to collective bargaining agreements, health insurance, and things like that. And then I spell out why there are some decreases, why we remove certain things. And thus, the default budget is, I think it was $389,000 less than the proposed budget.
Great. Thank you. So it goes over what we discussed earlier. And we'll pause here for questions on the school side of the budget. Questions or comment? Yes, Barbara, if you'd like to come up.
Thank you.
Barbara, if you just want to come up to the microphone. Yep, that's great. And then just say your name and address.
Barbara Griffin, Merrill Road. You talked about the default budget has the contract from last year. Can you refresh my memory? What were the increases in the teachers' contract that got negotiated and voted on last year? Does anybody remember?
Scott, if you'd like to come up. Scott, if you'd like to come up.
What the percent increases were?
Do you want to know what the percent increases were?
Yeah, because I want to compare it to what the contract were being asked to approve this year.
I'm going to have to check my computers. I don't want to give an off the top. I believe that they were in the neighborhood of 2.5%.
They were.
But I'll double-check that. The numbers.
Between 2 and 3.
Between 2 and 3.
The ones, the teachers were last year.
That's correct.
And then what's, you have the dollar amount. What's, and I know, you know, there are steps and grades. What's the percentage, average percentage increase?
The average percentage is 4.4%.
Okay. So, and the estimated increase in Article Three, that's the incremental amount, but correct for purposes of future planning, it's for, and I asked the same question on the town side for contracts. Year two of the contract is an additional 400-something thousand from the base year, and year three is an additional 600,000, right? It's a, because you're just doing the incremental change, right?
Yes. And if I may, if I can.
Yeah.
The number that was, that I know that Mr. Talbot discussed, $226,000, the tax-raised portion of that is less because we get grant monies, and some of it's food service. So it's actually, we're raising by taxation $207,000, so.
Okay.
So you're aware. It's in the warrant.
For the amount to be raised.
Correct, by taxation.
Without getting into the specifics of contract negotiations, is there a reason for the 4% increase, which seems higher than what other contracts are being negotiated for, for both municipal and school district employees? And I'm only saying that in past presentations, I think, for the teachers last year, we had a slide that said what average wages were and that kind of thing. And I know it's harder to do for this contract.
So let's recognize Brian Bolt, your superintendent, to answer that question.
Good evening. Thank you. Part of what we tried to accomplish is, every year when we negotiate a contract, we do a thorough and comprehensive benchmark assessment. So we look at the wages for all of our neighboring towns, and we're able to compare so that we're able to recruit and retain high-quality individuals. We have about 171 people are part of this bargaining unit, and this includes all of our administrative assistants, our paraprofessionals, our custodians, our cooks, our folks who work in the kitchen. The percentage, it is variable. The 4.4% is the average over the three years. So some years are a little higher, some years are a little lower. When we have folks who are on the top step, they get a lower amount because they're just basically getting more like a cola. But the average is 4.4%. The people in this unit, the average wage, the average salary is about $20,000 for the people in this bargaining unit.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then I had a question on Article Four, for the modular units at Glen Lake. Are we still paying the bond on that building?
No. On what building?
Glen Lake.
The only bond the school district currently has is for the 2001 renovations here at Goffstown High School, and that bond expires.
Oh, that was a purchase. Okay.
So actually, it might be of interest to the committee, if I may, Mr. Chair. Yes. When we built Glen Lake School, the state of New Hampshire paid for 75% of the building aid, as well as the entire first-year costs, total operational costs. And that was part of the incentive for communities to add kindergarten. So the community of Goffstown actually got a really great deal.
Right, and they got in on the building aid before.
We got in on the building aid, and part of the reason for the modular classroom, I don't want to speak for the school board, certainly Mr. Talbot can do that, there is no longer any building aid from the state of New Hampshire. So when we did the addition here at Goff, or the renovations here at Goffstown High School, we got 40% of the cost covered by the state. Part of the rationale for looking at a modular-type classroom instead of a traditional brick-and-mortar is just simply that there is no more building aid. So the idea of going forth with a multimillion-dollar expansion at Glen Lake was not something that the school board was comfortable with.
And that's why we, from the school board perspective, that's why we had to take a longer strategic look at a space needs issue that we have, instead of trying to really address this through a Band-Aid solution. So we are looking at the module classroom to satisfy the space needs we have at Glen Lake. We're taking away closets. We're putting out instructional spaces. So all of our closets have been removed in our instructional space now for our children. The only two areas that I think that we have is the maintenance closet that houses a lot of chemicals, and our IT hardware, and I believe the principal's office are the only two areas that we don't have instructional space.
And the boiler room. There are no children in the boiler room, I give you my assurance. This project is, it's a good solution for us. It will not look like a trailer. It will be, it'll be a nice, good, clean, professional learning environment. It's about 6,200 square feet. We're going to have four classrooms. There will be children's bathrooms in each classroom. There will be some small group instructional spaces, as well as a small meeting room. And there will be a connection between the existing brick-and-mortar structure, so children will not be going outside. It's a contained environment. And actually, if I can add one more thing, it is important to note that we have been very successful. The state of New Hampshire has something called public school infrastructure grants that the governor had prioritized money for school safety projects. We put in for a number of them and were very successful, but there was one project that we were denied three different times. And that is to expand the road at Mountain View Middle School. If you've ever had the pleasure of going to pick up or drop off a child at the beginning or end of the day, or some of our first responders to get an ambulance, a fire truck, police cars up to Mountain View, it is very dangerous between the buses, all the cars picking up parents. So what we're, what we put in for a grant that was denied was to widen the road going up to Mountain View. So if you drive up to Mountain View, the road to the right where all the traffic goes, we want to expand that road. So this kindergarten project, there's approximately 5,000 yards of good, clean gravel and material that, instead of paying to have it trucked off-site, we're going to pay to bring it to Mountain View and be placed and stockpiled so that at some point in time, about probably in excess of $50,000 to $75,000 worth of material, will be ready to go for that project sitting on-site. So in addition to the modular classroom, that's kind of a secondary benefit based on this project, as we've defined it.
Okay, thank you. As to the classrooms that are being added, what is the estimated life of the classrooms?
The building itself, we would anticipate a lifespan of 20 to 25 years. The building will be placed on a slab, and it will be, one of the things that's a little unique about this, not to get into the details, but typically, if you think about a modular classroom, they're raised up because they're actually trucked in on an axle. This is going to be sunk down. If we had the building raised up, we would have had to have a 30-foot-long ramp connecting based on the percentage of increase over the length of the ramp. So we're actually going to sink the building down and be able to insulate and make the bottom really secure. So we would anticipate at least a 20-year lifespan, 20 to, and so in fairness, we had modular classrooms at Bartlett that we just replaced, and the units were 30 years old.
Okay. And then my last question on this, in regards to where the classrooms are going to be located, I, sorry, I haven't taken the time to look at any plans, if they're available. Would this be in the section of the property where, when we purchased the property and voted for the kindergarten, we were told the building could be expanded?
Yes.
Okay. So is there a reason why we're not expanding the building with Hardscape, with hard brick-and-mortar and doing modular units?
Really, that comes down to cost. So we anticipated that the cost of this modular classroom is about a quarter to a third of the cost of a traditional brick-and-mortar building. So it just came down to cost. We really didn't want to come in with a three-to-four, four-and-a-half-million-dollar project, particularly in an environment where there's no longer any school building aid. It just came down to the dollars.
All right, great. So when I've had people tell me that Glen Lake kindergarten building could not be expanded, that's incorrect?
That is incorrect.
Oh, okay.
That is incorrect. And in fact, if people have sort of a picture in your mind of looking at Glen Lake School, this would be on the left of the building. So right now, there's kind of a slope and a hill. That hill is going to be removed. That's the 5,000 yards of fill that I'm talking about. The building would be there. The original design called for two areas of potential expansion. One is right exactly where we're talking about, and the other connected over, there's a section of wetlands, and there's a drainage culvert. And then over where the playground is, if you think about the kids' playground area, that's the other area that could be expanded. So this is sort of one part of the potential expansion at Glen Lake.
Okay, thank you. Did I, I came in late, and I apologize. Did I miss a presentation on enrollment numbers?
Yes.
Okay, all right. I'm not going to ask any questions then. Thank you.
Further questions or comments from the public? All right. Seeing them, we'll move on to the town side. Proposed operating budget for the town is $23,714,941. That's an increase of $1,593,933 over the current year budget, or 7.2% increase. The default budget for this year is $22,804,287. The Budget Committee's proposed budget is the number stated previously. The difference from default is $910,654. The Select Board proposed budget for this budget year was $24,348,142, which was a $1,543,855 difference from the default. The default is $416,818 increase from the 2019 budget. So we'll go department by department, but to address some things that are town-wide effects happening this year. One thing this committee has discussed, I think, quite often, is 53rd pay week period in this year, which makes it a hard place to start with budgeting, roughly about a 1.5% increase just based off of that 53rd pay week coming in this year due to the calendar. Contractual increase of four union CBAs approved at town meeting in 2019. 2.5% step increase for non-union employees. New positions relating to fire operations includes four new full-time firefighters approved at town meeting in 2019, funded with 75% offsetting FEMA/SAFER grant revenue, and there are four elections in 2020. As with Jared, Select Board, if there's any points that you want to chime in on, let me know, or feel free. Town hall, the 2019 budget was $2,373,162. The proposed budget in 2020 is $2,512,467, which is roughly a difference of 6%. There's some licensing that goes into that. Also, a lot of that has to deal with the four elections that we are looking at in the next budget year, which is roughly a $40,000 increase. The 53rd pay week just in town hall is roughly around $30,000. And the tech, the info tech budget is up due to absorbing the police station phone upgrades, some new software to improve network security and related training, and the new module for MUNIS to improve efficiencies townwide. And that Microsoft Office-ing license for all town departments is roughly a $40,000 cost. Moving on, we have insurances. The difference between the 2019 and 2020 proposed is roughly 4.6%, going from $2,543,235 to $2,659,275. So roughly a difference of just over $100,000 there. Property liability, unemployment, and workers' comp insurance were moved from individual departments in 2017 to the town department, the town hall side of things. Health and dental insurances were moved from individual departments into the town line in 2018, and health and dental insurance rates went up 4% for 2020. Moving on to police, the 2019 budget was $4,339,444. Proposed 2020 budget, $4,378,435, difference of roughly $39,000 or a 0.9% increase. In CIP, we have the replacement of three police cruisers and the replacement of sidearms and shotguns. In police, the 53rd pay week is roughly a $67,000 increase. Union and, patrolmen, union, dispatch, union had CBAs that were approved at 2018 town meeting, and the contractual wage increase in the 2019 budget, as well as default. And the cost for the three police cruisers is roughly $115,000, and the sidearms and shotguns is roughly $61,000. Moving on, we have fire. 2019 budget was $2.3 million roughly, and that's increasing roughly to $2.6 million, so about $300,000 difference there, or 13.5%. In CIP, we have the replacement of the fire utility truck, number two. We have the 53rd pay week coming up, and also the four new full-time firefighters positions that were discussed before. Select Board, do you have anything to add? I haven't done a lot of work on that issue.
Yep, the FEMA SAFIR grant will offset those four additional firefighters.
On the revenue.
On the revenue side, yeah.
Moving on to public works, we have 2019 budget of $4,712,387. The proposed 2020 budget is $4,976,633, difference of $264,246, or 5.6% increase. There's some machinery and equipment listed there, and improvements other than buildings, including Henry Bridge, some traffic signal upgrades, and the road program slash reclamation. In this committee's last meeting, we decreased that by 200,000, and later on, there was a corresponding increase in a warrant article to increase what was previously 300,000 to 500,000. So that moved out of this, the public works budget here and into the warrant article to keep us on track there with the road program.
Can I just make a comment?
Yep.
So the Select Board opted last night to approve that additional $200,000 from road plan to use from unassigned fund balance. So that is an article that you'll see on there. But that was the board's commitment to going with what the voters had, said they wanted to add back into reclamation. So that is a separate article, but still a point of focus for the Select Board.
Thank you. Moving on to parts and rec. In the 2019 budget, we had $427,571. 2020 proposed budget, $437,737, difference of around $10,000, or 2.4%. There's the Goffstown Sports Complex, continuing to get work done there. The 53rd pay week is roughly a $4,000 increase there. The installation of fencing, a pump house, and screening trees at the Goffstown Sports Complex, the price tag for that is $130,000. Moving on to the library, in the 2019 budget, we had $680,356. 2020 proposed is $721,144, or a difference of roughly around $40,000, or a 6% increase. 53rd pay week here is around $10,000. 53rd pay week here is around $10,000. In some history, all library personnel were plotted on new compensation plan as of July 1, 2018. In 2019 and all years after, any step increases will be based on performance. For 2020, the compensation plan was increased by 2% to reflect a needed market adjustment. Town plan underwent the same adjustment in the 2019 budget and there were no CIP items for the library. Moving on to the capital improvement program or CIP. In the 2019 budget, there was 1,855,470 budgeted here. In 2020 proposed, we have 1,920,770, a difference of 370,996 or 20% increase. The increase in CIP reflects the decision in 2019 to move 1.2 million of capital projects as special articles to fund through fund balance. Proposed CIP portion of the budget is an increase of roughly around 20%. Increase in CIP this year reflects decision in 2019 to move those capital projects as special articles. Does not include funding capital reserve funds. To look at the tax rate impact here, current tax rate on the town side of $8.14. The proposed 2020 tax rate is $8.57, 43 cent increase or 5.3%. For the default budget, the difference would be 20 cents or 2.5%. Most of the special and separate articles are funded through unassigned fund balance and that represents an additional 2 cents to the tax rate in those special articles. And then here you can see a historical town tax rate. And you can take a second to look at that there. And then what we have here is a breakdown in direct cost for the median single-family residents here in town. So if your home is valued at 263,000, you can see the difference in what the proposed tax rate would be. So on the town side, the tax bill for 2019 would have been 2,147. In 2020, that would be 2,265. And then we have the default budget. Derek, I'm sorry. Would you present this on town side too?
Thank you. For those who don't know me, I'm Derek Horn. I'm the town administrator. Similar to the school district, the governing body is responsible for calculating the default budget. As you see here, we have four unions in the town, all of which have active collective bargaining agreements. So those contractual increases that were approved at previous town meetings are included. We also have the four new full-time firefighters that were approved at 2019 town meeting and we received the SAFER grant. So you see a large increase on the operating budget for those, but there's also a 75% offsetting revenue from those grant funds. We have the 53rd pay week for all employees, health, dental increases based on current contracts and personnel plans, and also the additional reclamation funds that were part of the 2019 special article. Last year, the town voters approved $300,000 from unassigned fund balance and directed the governing body, the select board, to put that into default budget, which they have done. The items that are not included are any wage increases for non-union employees, any one-time, any one-time projects or expenses in all of the departments, but also in CIP, specifically highlighting cemetery and Parks and Rec had lawn mowers last year. Police department had radar trailer and DPW had mobile lifts and fuel pump repairs. But the biggest difference you'll see in CIP is last year, the select board made the decision to put most of those out to special articles. Those are not carried forward in this year's default budget because they were in special articles last year.
Great, thank you. Moving on to the budgetary warrant articles. Article seven is required by NH, the DRA, to fund EMS operations from the EMS Special Revenue Fund. Article is meant to offset EMS operations in the operation, in the operating budget. If article fails, operations will be funded through taxation, which would be roughly 37 cents. Basically, the voters have to approve the revenue coming in, in that article. Article eight is a deposit into the Fire Apparatus Capital Reserve Fund from unassigned fund balance. Fire Apparatus Capital Reserve Fund was established at town meeting in 2008 for the purpose of purchasing fire apparatus, thereby avoiding spikes in the tax rate. Deposit this year would be 225,000 from unassigned fund balance. The current balance as of 12/31 was 465,253.50. And article nine is a deposit into the Grassmere Town Hall Capital Reserve Fund. There's a project over there that been working on to develop the town hall over there, make it ADA compatible, hopefully one day be a revenue source for the town. Moving on, we have article 10, which we touched on earlier, which deals with reclamation. Those funds are also to come from unassigned fund balance. And here we have article 11, article 12, which is committee has not heard before. So I would welcome Diane from Christman's House up now to present some information about article 11 and Christman's House as an organization.
Thank you.
And Diane, there were some handouts that I think you had.
Yes.
Over on the table there if anyone wants to follow along.
Do you have handouts on the table if anybody saw them? And the committee received their handouts via email, am I correct?
Yep.
So as I mentioned, Diane McCarthy, I'm the executive director of Christman's House Coalition for Youth. For those of you who aren't familiar with our organization, we are your local nonprofit who advocates for children and families here in town. Our mission is to encourage and empower positive choices in the lives of our young people by helping to create a healthy and supportive community. We do that in a number of ways. One of the ways we do it is through collaborative partnerships with our local stakeholders such as the school districts, Goffstown Police, the Y, the library. We also collaborate with statewide partners such as NAMM New Hampshire, the New Hampshire Drug Enforcement Administration. We're active partners with the New Hampshire Juvenile Court Diversion Network. I do hold a seat on that executive committee, which is a good opportunity for us here in Goffstown to take some leadership as it pertains to juvenile court diversion on the state level. We also achieve our mission by offering a variety of different programs, all aimed at lifting our kids up, providing opportunities, and helping them make safer and better choices. In deference to time, I won't go over this entire folder, but certainly you have some detailed information in the handout that I provided. I do however want to share some highlights of our work because we're doing really great work at Christman's House and I think it warrants sharing for sure. One of those highlights is our juvenile court diversion program. We are one of, I believe, 17 programs in the state of New Hampshire that have achieved accreditation through the New Hampshire Juvenile Court Diversion Network. This offers our local kids, first-time offenders, an opportunity to be held accountable for their crimes while doing so outside of the court system. We meet the kids where they are, we work on building their skills, helping them increase their toolboxes so that they can make better choices, and again, at the same time, holding them accountable. We do screen everybody. Now, 100% of our kids are screened for substance misuse and for mental health issues and the appropriate referrals are made on the spot if that need were to be demonstrated. Something else that we do, we focus very hard on reducing recidivism. We participate in recidivism studies through the Juvenile Court Diversion Network. And I'm very pleased to say over the last several years that we've been participating in the studies, our numbers have been about some of the lowest in the state of New Hampshire. So I'm really proud of that work and what we're doing here in Goffstown. We also run our volunteers program, which many of you may know, does offer some volunteer opportunities for our kids here in town. Studies show that young people who are engaged in volunteer work do better in school, they have higher rates of graduation, they feel more connected to their community, and they are at lower risk for engaging in risky behavior. We also run youth forums. We've been running a youth forum here at GHS for 26 years now, which is amazing and really a credit to our community and our organization. We're also in our fifth year at Mountain View. These are, in summary, monthly meetings of invested adults with our kids. It allows the adults to build relationships. We have representatives from Goffstown PD, Combs, Goffstown Library, the Y, Goffstown Clergy Association, of course, Christmas House, representatives from the schools, sometimes town administration, folks from New Boston come in. And it's a good opportunity for relationship building. It helps empower the youth voice. It allows us to immediately identify what the needs of our kids are and work together collectively to meet them. Some of the more noteworthy achievements of youth forum, we had some kids make suicide prevention video a few years ago. That was one of two, this is two statewide, selected by NAMM New Hampshire to be featured at their annual suicide prevention conference, which was really impressive. We had a group of kids last year make a bullying video that once again was selected as a winner through the Magnify Voices contest that they had. We had a vaping forum, 250 kids participated. It was optional. They learned the consequences and the risks of vaping. And that came directly from concerns from our kids at youth forum. So a lot of good stuff happening there. We also do a lot of mental health work. And I do think it's important to note, because I want everybody to hear, it's concerning to me. Rates of teen suicide attempts and irradiation have jumped over 70% nationwide between 2006 and 2016. Even more alarming is that current rates among New Hampshire's teens are about 50% higher per capita than the national average. That's unacceptable to me for sure. And I know of all of us here. So we need to really be looking at this. One of the things that we did last year is I brought NAMM New Hampshire in for an intensive six and a half hour full-day training that was 30 students and 18 adults. And to our credit, we exceeded capacity on the adults. There was so much interest. As the students go, we had 30 kids come and we had a waiting list. There are still more who would like to take it. But each one of those kids are trained, they know how to identify the risks and know how to respond appropriately in the event that they have a friend who is unsafe. I know of several cases, unfortunately, where this training went into play and was used by a young person. And I could not be gladder, if it's needed, that we were able to provide it. Substance misuse prevention, of course, we are your prevention resource. Every one of our programs has a mental health component and a substance misuse component. There's no question there. Some of the things we've been doing with substance misuse prevention, we've had teens trained in opioid misuse prevention. They participated in the forum at WMUR. And mind you, they did so impressively. Goffstown was extremely well-respected, could not be prouder. We've sent kids down to Atlanta for the CADCA conference. We've sent them to Bryant for the youth summit. They participated in the DEA opioid awareness summit. We've got somebody holding a seat on the Governor's Youth Council. That is the only of its kind in the country, which is pretty neat, and we've got somebody there. We also just recently bring folks over to Breed New Hampshire for their vaping unveiled training. So we now have a group of kids who are trained in vaping prevention and they are able to train to adults, to their peers, and there's also a middle school module. And just before I wrap up, I do want to address our challenge day. Challenge day is probably the biggest program that we offer from a programmatic perspective. It is a really big undertaking that is offered here at GHS. These are full-day intensive programs. I know several people in this room now have participated in challenge days. So you can, you know, maybe share your experience. But in a nutshell, these are intensive, full-day workshops that address violence, teasing, social oppression, racism, harassment, peer pressure, suicide, alcohol, drugs, really everything that we're looking to do. We've offered it now three years running. And the experience that we've seen, the feedback, the impact that it's had on the kids, what we've seen on the school, just in the climate has been remarkable. And we could not be happier to be able to sponsor it and fund it and certainly are so abundantly grateful that we have been able to do so. And we do that because of the support that we get from the taxpayers and from our community through our fundraisers and in part through this warrant article. This warrant article and the amount of 20,000, this is the same amount that has been overwhelmingly approved by the voters for the last eight years, Bill? The select board voted unanimously to recommend the article, am I correct, Kelly?
That's correct.
And I certainly hope that you folks can do the same. As you can see from the numbers, this warrant article represents only 19% of our budget. We do not rest on this. We are constantly fundraising and considering other sources such as grants, et cetera. But make no mistake, that 19% is actually, it's huge for us. It has made such a difference. We can leverage the warrant article when we write a grant. What they want to know is, are you supported elsewhere? What do you have? And to be able to say we have the backing of the community through this warrant article, that's been a game changer for us. It is a significant contributor to our ability to offer the programs that we do.
Terrific. Thank you so much, Diane.
You're welcome.
I'll open it up to questions from the committee at this time. All right. Tina, thank you so much.
Thanks, guys.
Charity?
I'm Ellen Romakowitz, Snook Road here in Goffstown. I also have the honor of being the new president of Goffstown Main Street Program, just elected like last month. So I'm coming along here. This year, we're asking for your support on the warrant article for $15,000. This year, Main Street, believe it or not, is starting our 33rd decade of service to Goffstown. We've been here for 20 years, since 2000. We remain committed to the village area as well as preserving its natural resources while maintaining our small-town quality of life and that sense of community that we all enjoy here in town. And it has to be a big plus for our local businesses. People enjoy coming down to town. Main Street is rededicating ourselves to reaching out to our local businesses, soliciting their input, offering matching grants if they wish to do new signage or do something with the facade to beautify the village area. And we are continuing our annual events that we all look forward to doing. We have our springtime golf tournament, which is probably one of our most significant fundraisers at Stonebridge. Old Home Day, Uncommon Art on the Common. Friday Night Under the Lights is done by the Main Street Program. We support and help out with the trick-or-treating in the village and Shop Small Saturday. And no, I have not forgotten the pumpkin regatta. That's the big event that everyone comes down to. Like I said, we are offering matching grants to our businesses to help defray their costs for what they might want to do to beautify the outside of their buildings. We are asking, and anyone who would like to volunteer a little bit at one of these activities or want to join And we look forward to continuing service to the Goffstown Village Area and our businesses and the greater area of Goffstown as citizens. And we ask for your support for this article. So thank you. Do you want to add anything? Dave, did you want to add anything? Wherever you went.
So I wanted to introduce Dave.
She's okay. He's okay.
Okay, he's okay. Well, he's interim director, and I'm Charity Frost. I'm the executive director. I'm actually still out on maternity leave, but I'm excited to be coming back on Monday, but I made a point to be here.
And we're excited to have you back, Charity.
Presenting to you all. So thank you so much.
Are there any questions? Derek?
Mr. President, what's your current budget at? Because I know that you're asking for this warrant article to be around fifteen thousand dollars. What's your expected operation budget?
I don't have it with me. Do you know off the top of your head? Say it again.
Ninety.
About ninety thousand a year. We have one staff person, our director, and we have a facility. We pay rent, you know, rent on operating expenses. These activities cost us money. Not all of them raise funds. The lights on the common that Main Street does raises no money for us. It's an expenditure that we give to the community, that we have that happening on the common. Trick-or-treating doesn't raise anything. Things like that are expenses all go to.
A lot of the things, so we have what we call friend raisers and fundraisers for the events. And then, in addition, while I am the only staff member, I am a part-time staff member. So I'm twenty hours a week. So we do try to be very conscious of both the cost to taxpayers when we ask for the money, but also to folks who gives to us, so that, you know, we work every one of those pennies as hard as we can.
And I do want to tell you that budgets are my thing, and I like to keep them tight. Some of you know. And we are looking to expand our fundraising, trying to go out and get corporate sponsorships kind of things that will help us a great deal and maybe make us less reliant upon these warrant articles. But this support is greatly appreciated, and it's nice to have the community's support for all these things that go on.
So I think the current ask would make it up about seventeen percent of the annual cost.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on, we have a graph here that goes over the unassigned fund balance over the years, as a lot of the warrant articles previously mentioned are funded by the unassigned fund Select One Boy, I'm not sure, kind of in the Select Board's Realm Two, look over the unassigned fund balance. I'm not sure if there's anything you want to add there.
Sure. Derek, I don't know if you want to talk about our reevaluation and the DRA setting that we went through.
Well, I'll just say that this chart, for those that grabbed the handout, is on the last page to show. Unassigned fund balance is a little bit unique when we compare ourselves to the school district. The town is required to maintain an assigned fund balance because we collect the taxes on behalf of not just the town, but also the county and the school district. And we have the responsibility of turning those funds over to the county and the school district, even when some people have maybe not paid timely. So fund balance helps us with that. The New Hampshire Department of Revenue Administration sets a minimum of five percent and a maximum of seventeen percent. Those are the bottom and the top line. And our actual unassigned fund balance through the years is that red line on the graph. That has moved up throughout the years. At town meeting in 2019, the town voters approved use of almost 1.5 million dollars of unassigned fund balance. So you do see a steep drop as you go from 2019 to 2020, but with some extra revenues coming in above what was projected in 2019, as well as some departments, because we had so much changeover this year, and some projects that came in under budget, some under expenditures. We expect that the end of the year, unassigned fund balance will be about 5.4 million dollars. And the Select Board has proposed using 825,000 in unassigned fund balance for special articles. Those are the two capital reserve fund deposits and the additional reclamation funds. They've also set aside 125,000 to use at tax rate setting in the fall of 2020. This is really meant to offset the impact of that 53rd pay period on the town side. But that's pretty much where we are. We are, with the use of these unassigned funds, we are approaching the Select Board's target of eight percent. So.
Great. Thank you so much, Eric. All right. And then we'll open it up for questions and comments on the town part of the budget.
Does this include the warrant articles?
Yes. Yep. Warrant articles also.
My name is Gail LaBrack, and I live on Crestwood Lane. And when it comes time for the board to do their deliberations and vote on these warrant articles, I'm going to encourage you strongly to recommend them on the ballot, each and every single one of them, but especially the special article, I think it's Article 10, that the board approved last night to add funds to the road plan through the fund balance, because it's going to have no tax impact. I'm with strong belief that the Budget Committee erred in reducing the road plan. The Committee disregarded the vote of the people who voted to increase the road plan last year. Our roads are terrible, and the road plan has suffered over the last number of years because of the lack of appropriate funding. There are complaints about the conditions of the roads everywhere you turn. The Select Board hears them, DPW hears them, and we read all about them on Facebook. They can't be ignored any longer, and the roads are demanding our attention. They're a main part of our infrastructure. So again, I'm just going to ask that you consider recommending these on the ballot.
Thank you.
I got told last year at the town meeting that I needed to come to the Budget Committee meeting, so here I am this year. So thank you for taking my questions. As to the two organizations that are asking, I understood in our warrant articles for contributions, which the town has done for a number of years, and they do worthy projects, and we've all enjoyed Main Street events, and certainly Crispin's House is a great asset to the community. I would be curious to know if the executive directors who are here tonight are able to say what kind of assets those organizations have, because both organizations are asking for an increase in town tax contribution. And I just was curious whether either one of those organizations are accumulating assets. As to the town budget, and I guess the school budget, I appreciate the presentation, and I know you all had meetings. It would have been helpful for me, as I was listening, to know what, if anything, you all cut from the department heads, because this almost looks like you just had one budget, and the reality is, I know you all considered department head requests and maybe did or did not make cuts, which I think is indicative for us as town people, to know whether you had issues with the presentation or some of the information, or whether you thought it was all terrific. So I just say that for future presentations. In regards to public works, I have to say that I thought your presentation on the public works was a little confusing. And I note that while the budget is higher, is the only thing that's missing from your budget for DPW, the money taken out that the Select Boards have now put back in? What other requests from DPW got cut? So I guess that's my third question, because I think that, so I have a question as to the two organizations, the DPW. Fire, I'm a little confused, because I thought I heard that the entire cost of the four additional firefighters was being paid by the grant. And then I thought I heard somebody say seventy-five percent. So I would hope that somebody could please clarify that, because my recollection is, when that was voted on last year, it was all going to be paid for. And I guess in conjunction with the DPW requests, I'd like to know with the Select Board warrant article, are we back up to what DPW wanted for roadwork? Because Gail LaBrack just spoke to you about what's happened to the road plan. I can give you a little history beyond that, and the road plan has been getting etched away at a long, long time. I'm not sure, quite frankly, we'd need to do some staffing issues to do a lot more than what DPW is doing now. But I think that if they've made requests, it is one of the most entertaining dialogues on Facebook in regards to our roads. I am on Facebook reluctantly, but, I mean, they were even getting, you know, posts, I don't know that they knew it, but there were posts that they needed to go out and sand and salt right away, because things were icing up a little bit. So I certainly think from a taxpayer standpoint, DPW is a department that we rely on a great deal. So those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go down the list there. Two organizations where, Derek, did you have something to say?
I do have some answers to those questions, if it's art with the chair.
Great. I'd like to go in order, unless you have the assets for the organizations.
Those are the only ones I don't have the answer to.
Okay. So I'll open that up to both organizations, if you have a response to that comment. If you'd like to.
I don't really have assets beyond our personal resources. I have a laptop. Is that what you're asking?
No, I just wanted to be clear with organizations.
Yeah. No real property. Yeah, I have, I have a little office. Yeah, and it's really just a couple file cabinets and whatnot, so nothing really. And I do just want to clarify too, because you had mentioned an increase, and I just want to be specific, that the amount that they're asking for is actually not an increase against any of the other years that we've asked for. The twenty thousand has stayed level for eight years now. It hasn't gone up.
Thanks for breaking me down.
I'm not a resident, so I understand I have to ask permission.
Oh, yep. And if you'd just like to state your name and.
Sure. My name is David Lawton. I'm the interim executive director of Goffstown Main Street. Kind of the same answer. We have a small spot off Main Street, less eight-hundred-seventy-five-dollar-a-month rent, and some filing cabinets, and even our shed is leased.
Maybe I wasn't, assets to me is just not stuff. I guess I'm wondering whether anybody has a big bank account. Because I'm always asking the town administrator if we have a big bank account.
Well, I can get specific on that, too. We do have a war-designated endowment. The size of that fund is about a hundred thousand dollars. In the past several years, the organization, I hope the mic's picking this up, the organization has been drawing that down with an annual draw, as you would do with any endowment. Right now, the board of the organization is considering a transformational strategy and using those funds and releasing them to take the executive director from part-time to full-time, so that they can do a much deeper impact and raise, as Ellen mentioned, raise a lot of their own funds. So that's what the situation is for Goffstown Main Street.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. All right, Derek, if you had answers, some questions?
Could you remind me?
Yep. We had a question about what was cut in total and what was cut specifically from DPW.
Okay. During the Budget Committee process, the Budget Committee caught 76,500 dollars from the Public Works Department. This included 10,000 dollars from cemetery wages, 2,000 dollars from cemetery maintenance supplies, 15,000 from Public Works Highway, 2,000 dollars from signs and highway, and 10,000 dollars in crack sealing. In fleet maintenance, the fleet maintenance was reduced by 14,500. And then in solid waste, grinding brush was reduced by 2,000, and recycling removal was reduced by 21,000. So again, that's a total of 76,500. On the CIP side, the Budget Committee reduced reclamation by 200,000. And then they also removed a replacement of a 100-yard trash trailer for 102,000. And then there were two projects as well. One was for 165,000 for Bog Road Bridges and 33,000 for the redesign of the intersection of Catamount Road and Goffstown Back Road. So those were the reductions made by the Budget Committee.
And then we also had a clarification on the fire.
On fire, yes. We gross-appropriate, so in the operating budget, you have the full cost of the four firefighters. On the revenue side, you have an offsetting revenue that is 75 percent of that cost that comes in on the revenue side. So the tax impact is basically 25 percent.
So the additional amount from the firefighting, Derek, if you can add to this, part of it was the requirement for retirement that we have to pay, and what were the other portions?
Yes. It's the wages, the benefits, New Hampshire retirement, and I believe there was also funds for outfitting the new firefighters with their turnout gear and that. So that was all calculated as part of the 2019 article.
Just one thing, I'm not sure I heard Barbara correctly, but the Main Street warrant article historically has been 20,000. Last year it was 15, and we kept it at 15 this year. So I thought I heard someone say that it went up, and it has not.
Thank you. Select One Boy.
Well, I think the last question that Barbara had was, what was the total ask for reclamation versus what's in the budget now? Is that correct?
Run a budget, and you went through the costs.
Yeah, so at the department head level, in reclamation, the request was for 1.6 million dollars. There's currently 1,100,000 dollars in the operating budget, and the Select Board has put forward a special article to fund for 500,000 from unassigned fund balance.
Which would include the 300,000 dollars that was voted on last year to be rolled in.
Well, the 300,000 should be in the 1.1, right? The 300,000 was voted and should be added to the default budget.
That's correct. The 300,000 from last year.
Right, so that's included.
Yeah, so the 300,000 should be in that 1.1 that's in the Budget Committee budget now.
Last year was 325,000 that went above 975. So actually, in the default budget, there is 1.3 million dollars in reclamation. It went to the Budget Committee. The Select Board first pared it down by taking 300,000 out and putting it into a special article. The Budget Committee removed 200,000, and then the Select Board added those funds over to the special article.
Just to clarify, the Select Board included the entire amount from last year in the budget that went to the budget?
Yes, yes.
Correct.
No, yes, they did.
No, I was saying that included that portion from last year. So the warrant article amount was not in addition to, or to replicate that amount. That was from unassigned fund balance to help offset that roll-in for this year. If that makes sense.
Derek, just to clarify, and Kelly, the 500,000 is in addition to the reclamation last year and the amount that we voted in special warrant article to become recurring part of the default?
No, it is not.
How much? 200?
It's 200. In the operating budget is 200,000 less. That has been moved over to a special article. Does that make sense? There should be 1.3 million dollars in the operating budget.
Well, I guess I have a question. If the town voted to increase the budget amount and have it in the budget every year, why would the Select Board cut it?
The Select, the Select Board did not. The wording in the article is to direct the Select Board to put it in default and operating budget. They did that, and then they passed it along to the Budget Committee.
So the Budget Committee cut it?
Yes.
Okay. So the question is, why, thank you for clarifying that. Why would the Budget Committee cut something that the town people obviously said they wanted? It should be in the default budget, and you want the risk of it not being passed in a special article? And when I say that, I say it in light of the fact. And when I say that, I say it in light of the fact that the school budget is approximately twice, and I'm being generous, of that of the town. And the cuts that we did to the budget were twice on the smaller budget than they were on the larger budget. And I'm not saying that that should be proportional because it's all a function of what budgeting is. But given those gross numbers, I actually don't think it's fair that the town's reclamation budget is subject to approval in a special warrant article now and should be part of the budget. So that's my two cents. Thank you.
I'm sorry. I'm a little confused, actually, by what we're saying because what we were, department head was 1.6, right?
Yes.
That's what initially was presented to us. The 2020 default is 1.275. I'm confused about us going below, what we're talking about, us actually as a budget committee going below what was offered. I'm confused about those numbers. I'm not sure, like, what was offered to us was 1.6. That's above the default that was presented.
So to clarify, in the 2019 budget for reclamation, there was $975,000 budgeted.
Correct.
In the special article, there was $300,000, and the wording in that directed the Select Board to include that in the default budget--
Yes.
--in the coming year, as, I think, as a motion to make sure that our road plan continues even if we were to go into a default. The action that this board took was to decrease that amount to 1.1 million, which is below the default amount of 1.275 million, which this board has the approval to do. In correspondence, there was a $200,000 increase made to Article 10, which increases the $300,000 to a half million. So we do get up to that 1.6 million. What you get is a lower number for the operating budget that will be in the article for the entire town side. This committee expressed some concerns with that number and passing with funds in there. And the cuts that we made, that Derek spelled out, and that were made to the reclamation and other projects in CIP, were in accordance to wanting to get the operating budget passed.
Can I add to that?
Yep.
Just to note that warrant article, the 500,000 is to come from unassigned fund balance. And we added that additional 200,000 last night, so I don't know if you, if everybody got notified of that. But that was, that additional increase was to offset what the budget committee took out. Again, the full total of the $500,000 in the warrant article coming from unassigned fund balance.
I just wanted to, I wanted to also comment on a specific item that was mentioned. Even though that we're looking specifically about what the budget committee cut for the school board, I would like to bring the superintendent up or our business administrator. Because before we receive the, or send the budget to the actual budget committee, we also cut a significant amount from the budget heads that were sent from the school board. And I'd like to actually have our superintendent list out the money or the dollar amount that we cut from the budget heads through the school board all the way up to the budget committee itself. So I think that's very important to also understand.
All right, to clarify, we did go through the school portion, but it was brought up. So superintendent, if you'd like to address what Jared stated.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just rough numbers, what Jared is speaking of. Before the budget even got to the school board at the SAU level, we cut over $1 million out of the requests from all the schools. I would point out, and I'm not sure if it was part of the handouts that Mr. Gross had provided, the Goffstown School District is among the lowest per pupil costs in the entire state. All of these numbers are available publicly. They're published by the New Hampshire Department of Education. We run a very conservative school district. Our increase is just over 2%, and that included our collective bargaining agreement cost increase. So before the school board even saw the budget, over $1 million of requests were reduced. The budget committee cut about $30,000, to answer Barbara's question, from the school district budget.
Scott, if you have anything else?
No, I was just saying, we did a lot of those. There's a lot of requests for additional personnel in the budget that came to the administration and in light of having a teacher's contract and other, and this portable, this modular classroom, we felt that the two most pressing needs were our contract and that modular classroom. And thus, we did, we cut, it was over, right, it was $1.4 million in total, and it was 1.1 in personnel alone.
Yep, Slough one, boy.
Thank you. Obviously, the town side does that, too. And I just wanted to note, the first question that Barbara had asked was what the total amount of cuts was from the town side, and then specifically DPW. Derek, do you happen to have the full, just from the budget committee itself? I don't think we, we probably don't have the, from department head to Select Board to budget committee numbers.
I can say the difference in the operating budget between the department head and the Select Board was approximately $640,000 that the Select Board cut or moved to special article. They did move a portion to the road prior to it coming to the Budget Committee. And then the Budget Committee, the difference between the Select Board level and the Budget Committee is approximately $634,000. So the Select Board, again, cut approximately 640,000, and the Budget Committee cut 634,000.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, further questions or comments? And with that, we'll close the public hearing for the Budget Committee. Thank you all. And the Budget Committee is going to, will move into, actually, do I need a motion to close the public hearing? Great. I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make--
Motion from Eileen, second from Spencer. All those in favor, raise your hand. All right, unanimous. Thank you very much. And with that, we'll move into Budget Committee will be making recommendations on the budget and on the warrant articles to go forward to deliver it. So we'll give folks, let's go three-minute break here. Yep, Spencer, do you--
Move for a three-minute recess.
Yeah.
Second floor.
All right.
You don't have to go three minutes.
I'm asking--
Bye.[1092.22]
Well, the way they do is Carol Hill rolled that.
Yeah.
So we can't.
Now we can't do that.
Sure.
It'd be funny to.
Yeah.
It did hurt it.
All right. Derek, if you could come up for just a second here?
Sure.
I would just like to go over quickly what action this board needs to take.
At this point, I would say you need to take a vote to, I guess, move forward with the school district budget and the town's budget. You have warrant articles, draft warrant articles, the language that both the school district and the town propose using before you. So you should make a recommendation on those so they can appear on the warrant. And I think that's pretty much all you have left to do.
All right. And then for folks who are new to the committee, can you explain the process that happens after this meeting?
So what we will do after this meeting, we will go in, Scott will do it on the school side, and Danielle will do it on the town side, basically enter the operating budget into the DRA portal, and they will approve that. And once we have that, we will send out an all call to budget committee members to come to Town Hall to sign the budget. We need a majority of the members before it can be posted with the warrant. So we'll be working on that this week, and hopefully we can have that done by the end of the week. So you'll have the majority of next week to come in and sign so we can get those signatures. And again, we've got to post that with the warrant on the last Monday of January, which is January 27th. So that's kind of our process moving forward.
And that goes to deliberate in?
It goes to the deliberative. The school district is on Saturday.
February 1st.
Or February 1st at 10:00 a.m., 10:00 here, with a snow date of Monday night. And the town is Tuesday, the 4th, at 7:00 p.m. with a snow date of Thursday over in the auditorium. And that's where those that participate in the deliberative session will review the warrant, and they can make changes at that time. If there are any changes to the money articles, the budget committee and the governing body will have an opportunity to revise their recommendation that goes on the ballot. So what we normally do is we do notice a budget committee and a school district or a select board meeting immediately after the deliberative session. So your participation at the both deliberative session is requested.
Great. And then, just to clarify, the budget committee has a recommendation that will go on the ballot for all warrant articles. And if there's not, if it's, is it, if there's not a motion made to change it, that the recommendations from this meeting go forward?
Yes. Yes. If there's no change at the deliberative session, the vote that you take tonight is what will appear on the ballot.
Thank you. All right. I'd like to start with the school budget. After the public hearing, are there any comments, questions from committee members? All right then. I'm seeing none. So our, let me just get to warrant articles here, sorry.
Mr. Cherry, would you like me to read the articles into the record?
Yes, that'd be great.
Okay. So Article 1 is to choose three members of the school board for the two and three years. Those will be, of course, named later. Article 2, shall the Goffstown School District raise and appropriate as an operating budget, not including appropriations by special warrant articles and other appropriations voted separately, the amount set forth on the budget posted with the warrant or as amended by the vote of the first session for the purposes set forth therein, totaling $45,662,226. Should this article be defeated, the budget shall be $45,272,597, which is the same as last year with certain adjustments required by previous actions of the Goffstown School District or by law. Or the governing body may hold one special meeting in accordance with RSA 4013, 10, and 16 to take up the issue of a revised operating budget only. This warrant article, the operating budget article, shall not include appropriations in any other warrant articles, and a majority vote is required.
Great. Thank you. So, moving forward here, we'll do raise of hands if, unless there's a motion to suspend rules for a roll call. I know we did that previously, but I'm fine with just raising hands. Great. So all those in favor of recommend, recommending that article, please raise your hand. Great. Were you unanimous? One, two. Twelve. So we're 12 to 0.
I'll call just, just to clarify, do we need to have a motion to recommend before we can do that in actuality?
I believe you should.
Great. Okay.
I, I thought I did that at the beginning. Should consider the motion as read?
I did.
Okay.
I don't know. If, if so, I second that.
So I wanted to, um, submit Article 2 as read.
I just want to make sure, I should have asked before, but.
So motion from Jared, second from Peter.
Yeah.
Motion was just read. All those in favor of said motion, raise your hand. Great. Were you unanimous? 12 to 0. Moving on to Article 3.
So I'll make a motion to submit Article 3 of.
Is there, is there a second?
Don't need to read it in.
I'll second.
Okay. Shall the Goffstown School District vote to approve the cost items included in the three-year collective bargaining agreement reached between the Goffstown School Board and the Goffstown Educational Support Staff Association with calls of the following increases and benefits at the current staffing levels? For years 20 to 21, an estimated increase of $226,951. For year 21 spanning to 22, $226,728. For year 22 to 23, an estimated increase of $203,916. And further to raise and appropriate the sum of that money of $226,951 for 2021 fiscal year, this amount to be offset by $12,390 from the food services revenues and $7,499 for the special reserve fund, with the remaining amount of $270,062 to be raised by taxation for the purposes of funding the additional costs attributed to the increase in these salaries and benefits required by the new agreement for those that would be paid at current staffing levels. This appropriation is in addition to warrant article number 2 of the operating budget.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Joe. All those in favor? All right. Thank you. Were you unanimous? 12 to 0. Moving on to the last article, is there any discussion here?
There's two more articles.
Oh, two more.
Sorry. I'd like to submit Article 4, which is to see if the Goffstown School District revolt to raise and appropriate the sum of $900,000 for the purposes of purchasing a four-classroom modular unit at the Glen Lake Kindergarten School, along with the associated site work, engineering, utility connections, and for costs incidental and related to the foregoing purposes. Funding for this article to come from additional one-time New Hampshire fiscal capacity disparity aid with no direct tax impact. This special warrant article will not, will be a non-lapsing appropriation per RSA 327, Section 6, and will not lapse until the kindergarten modular unit is completed or by June 30th, 2022, whichever is sooner. This appropriation is in addition to warrant article number 2, which is the operating budget.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Richard Fletcher. I'll open it up for discussion. All right. Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your hand.
Move to vote to recommend to see if the Goffstown School District will vote to raise and appropriate $200,000 for the deposit into the existing cap, uh, facilities capital reserve fund and to authorize the use of that amount from the June 30th, 2020 unassigned fund balance available on July 1st, 2020. This appropriation is in addition to warrant article number 2, the operating budget.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Jeff. Further discussion? All right. Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? All right. So we're 9 to 3. Thank you.
Yes. Nine to 3. We have Richard Fanta, Spencer Gallegos, and Joe Alexander in opposition. Thank you.
All right. Moving on to the town side here, we start at Article 6. The rest are elections or zoning articles. So I'll entertain a motion first, and then after, we can open it up for discussion.
I'll make a motion to approve Article 6 as presented.
Is there a second?
Wait, where are we going? I thought we were on units.
On the town. Yep. On Article 6 is.
Those are planning board.
It's election and then, and then there's.
We go to Article 6. Okay. So we're doing the, this is the budget now.
Yep.
The town budget.
Yep.
Okay. Can I make a motion before that? Okay. Just because we heard a lot from public hearing about people being concerned about the reclamation funding, I want to make a motion to add the $200,000 back into the Article 6 town budget. And that, so that would change the wording of the article to add $200,000 to Article 6. So I can read the entire article if you want, if that, if that's motion in order.
Does that include a correspondent decrease in Article 10?
The UFB? Um, yes.
So.
Well, we're, we're taking motion separate, so I can't say that's going to take.
I'll second.
So this motion is to increase it by $200,000.
Derek, does that need to be in any more detail?
Well, we got a couple issues here. I'm looking at Article 6, and my heart stopped because I could see that in the actual wording of it, it says 21 million. It should be 23 million. That would have been a, so, but, at this point, I think, yeah, yeah. So I'd ask you to make that change.
Sure.
But, so the question is, you want to put the $200,000 back into the operating budget?
I want to increase the, the funding or the budget amount here by $200,000.
Okay.
So I will make a motion to increase the number on the paper by $200,000.
Okay. And if you could just direct us where, if you have a specific, I assume you're talking reclamation?
It's for the reclamation. So whichever, if you could help me.
46950.
Yes.
What did you say that the figure was you had, you just talked about without the?
If you look at the words on page 2, it says 21,714,000. It's actually 23 million, and those come off the bottom of the handout.
That's the figure that we used.
Yes.
That's the figure.
Yes. Yes. It's just, it was copied over, Ron.
Do you have any further concerns with?
At this point, the select board would have to, the select board's special article of $500,000 from unassigned fund balance still stands. Today is the last day for petition articles, so it would go to, you'd have an operating budget with that 200,000 put back in, and the special article would go with 500. So you would actually have 1.8 million versus what was originally asked, 1.6. So you could, I guess, have that conversation at the deliberative session if the budget committee wishes to have it in the operating budget and then ask the select board to reduce their special article. They could do that.
Would we not be able to reduce the special article at this meeting?
Correct. You cannot. That's a, that was determined, you're voting to recommend or not recommend. You do not have, the articles are either proposed by submitted petition, or they are put forth by the governing body, the select board. So you don't have the ability to change the, the articles after this. You do have control over Article Number 6.
The dollar, the dollar amount specifically?
Yes. Yes. And if we have duplicate funding in those, I guess we'll deal with it at deliberative session.
So I have, I have two questions. Would that be?
Just to be clear, motion by Joe, second from Kelly.
Hi. And we're discussing the motion?
Yep. The motion to increase the budget by $200,000 in the reclamation line.
Is Adam Jacobs here?
No, he is not. He left.
Okay. I would have asked him a question. So given that, and discussion that we've had here and online, right, that we've, we've read, I feel like the more prudent thing to do would be to go with this budget to deliberative, since we, if, if we could do the work on both ends, then I would say, okay, let's do the work tonight, and let's discuss that. But I think, given that we can't do the work on both sides, it'd be more prudent, and I'm saying directly, I'm going to be very open to that discussion at deliberative, to talk about whether we increase over here and decrease on the other side, right? But I think, given that we can't actually make any adjustments on the other end, it should probably go to deliberative as is, unless we want to make any other changes. That's my recommendation. I would also have the question for DPW in general, given that Barbara Griffin's question tonight included a call that, that said that she, she's made a statement that we may not have the staffing to do the work. She made that statement, and I wanted to clarify that with DPW before we moved on. But we'll just have to hold off.
You can give input to that if you want.
Sure.
Part of expanding that was to outsource for the things that we can't do in-house. So, I mean, we would be able to fulfill that. We're looking at things like for Bog Road that got taken out, if there's a way that we can do some of that work potentially in-house to reduce the costs, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
So we're having to shift things around because of the reductions that were made to DPW and changing the project scopes of which they're going to work. So if they know that that's their, their capacity to work in, they'll, I mean, they'll be able to fulfill that. That's my opinion, based on conversations we've been having all year.
And then the other question I'd have is, so basically, there's, one way or another, the, the hope is to get it up to 1.6 million this year. Do we have a good sense from DPW of where we want to get it over to, over the next five years, or we want to get that number all the way up to?
I believe there is a road plan in the CIP.
Part of the presentation, there was a funding.
Well, actually, I think, yeah, the rest, it goes up.
Derek, if you'd like to comment.
You, you have a budget that was presented by a department head that is no longer here, that may have a different philosophy as Adam has. I know last night, when he presented to the select board, he did talk about having a slightly different philosophy, but that they are working on that five-year road plan, and they see a point where the road, the road plan funds would level off a little bit sooner than may have been told to the budget committee in the past. So, you know, without Adam here to comment it on specifically, but again, you're, you had one department head start, start this budget process, and then a new one come in, so you might have a little bit change of philosophy there.
And it is a very long-term plan, so it's important for us to hear about that, since we'll have a chance at deliberative.
And that's just in regards to the road plan in general. He has a couple different ideas on how to get to that long term.
Yeah.
But again, they're still in the development process of that, of working with the board to present that. So we have an idea of the end goal, but the how to get there is still definitely being worked on right now.
Yep. Derek.
Just a point of order. And it breaks my heart to ask this, but is Representative Alexander allowed to make this motion, as there were a few of us that said that we could, that, that were against the removal of these funds? And are we allowed, as not the prevailing side, to actually amend those funds now?
This isn't a new, this is a completely new motion. So this is, this is because we're approving an article.
I mean, you're adjusting the same line if.
Wait. Joe, considering, considering the answer about Derek, do you still want to continue with this motion now, knowing that we can't make the corresponding changes?
Well, we can make a contingent on the select board, but I still think it's really important to keep it, keep this money back in the budget.
You can make a contingent on us reducing it, which I obviously can't speak for the board, but I believe they're being supportive.
I would just continue with Jared's question about parliamentary procedure here. I know my friends Spencer and Richard down there are a lot more first on that than I am.
I also know that we don't have approved meeting minutes from our last meeting when this was actually discussed and the votes were taken, so I don't know if that also factors into what is appropriate, but I defer to our subcommittee experts.
The committee here has adopted rules that are not standard, so these rules can be superseded by suspension of the rules, because this is not a suspension of Roberts. This is just a suspension of rules made by the, the paper we all got back in March. So you can just suspend the rules two-thirds. Or if you want to go further than that, you can also appeal the ruling of the chair and do whatever you want, because it's not a suspension of the bylaws, it's just a suspension of the rules. So you can, if you want to, if you really want to, just.
So you can, if you want to, if you really want to, it just does require two-thirds.
So without a suspension of the rules?
If the, if by the understanding we have of the prevailing side and however that works, then yes, you need two-thirds because of the rules that we have approved back in March.
But I, I will say that this is not the same motion being brought up. It is a different motion based on the article as presented, so it wouldn't technically fall within that.
I'm not sure if I fully agree with that, but I think this is a discussion that this committee wants to have. So I'm going to let it continue, the motion as presented. Yes, Carl?
I think the motion, that we do a straw vote to see how many people are really in favor of this particular motion?
There's already a motion on the table, though.
I know.
Okay. So you're asking for a straw vote?
Yeah.
Okay. Point of order? Yep. Hate to do this, straw polls are not allowed. All right. What I'll open it up for is discussion by each committee member on how they feel about this particular motion. Great, we'll go down the line. So start with Richard Fletcher.
Yep, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
We've already appropriated $300,000 in the budget for, for this, this article.
So we've appropriated one point...
So how come we're going to appropriate...
Okay, continue.
$500,000 more? Why wouldn't we be appropriating $200,000 to increase it by? Because it seems to me we're going to give them a couple hundred thousand more dollars than what they really want.
So currently, with the motion on hand, yes, that is what would happen. This board doesn't have the ability to address the special article that made a corresponding increase to the reclamation budget. So currently, in the budget, we have 1.1 million dollars for reclamation. The motion here is to increase that to 1.3 million. In addition to that, you would have the special article that had $500,000.
There's an athlete who increased it.
There's Article, there's Article Ten, later on, that deals with reclamation, that adds $500,000 from unassigned fund balance to reclamation, which, if this motion were to pass, that would bring the road plan to 1.8 million. Does that get at what you're, you're going for? Okay. Do you have anything to add on the motion on hand?
No.
Carl?
No.
Nothing to add?
I have nothing to add, I've made my point.
Okay. How do you feel about the motion? Yeah.
I want to keep it as it is.
Bill?
Not to raise it.
As I currently understand it, I have no objections to the motion.
Okay.
You know how I feel.
Joe?
Jeff?
I mean, I was against the original removal of the 200,000 in the first place. But we voted on this as a committee, and it passed to reduce it, and without the ability to change the corresponding article that was used to offset it, I mean, it just makes sense to just deal with this all at deliberative.
Jeff? Sorry, Jared?
I like, Representative Alexander did not like, and voted against the removal of this 200,000 initially. I'm glad to see that we put it back, at least with this motion, that we're putting it back. I'm in favor of this, and I'll be voting for this, and I just hope that as we move forward as a board after our next election cycle, we can provide better guidance to all of our department heads on what we expect for a, an approved increase at the beginning of the budget cycle, so that we don't have these long discussions that we've been having this year.
Thank you. Eileen?
I would be against changing it at this point.
I agree with Jeff's opinion on this. I wish to take it to deliberative.
I agree, Jeff.
Yeah, I would also have to say that I think that we would run the risk of ending up with more than was originally asked for, not to mention, I do think that if we put the money back into the operating budget as it stands, we would run the risk of, of the default budget scenario. So I'm against the motion.
Great. My concerns from the beginning have been with passing this budget by the voters as we stand. If you added these funds in, it would be well over a million dollars over the default budget, and when you get into that situation, also taking into effect the uncertainty that a lot of folks have felt with taxes in the last few years here due to the situation on the school side, and just the rapid change in tax bills that had occurred, I think that there might be more discontent for a raise that big. So I continue to approve of the number that we brought forth to this hearing, and I'm very satisfied to see the increase in Article Ten. I think that that also gives voters a way to directly support roads and road funding. Any further discussion before we move to a vote on the motion?
Could we just quickly discuss the tax impact of the two options? So if we were to keep it out of the operating budget, the tax impact is different than, because they're asking for it out of unassigned fund balance, that the additional 200,000 will come out of unassigned fund balance, the tax impact on this year, what would that be?
It would be roughly, I want to say...
It'd be approximately 12 cents.
12 cents. Which bring, that's 12 cents further away from default in terms of, in terms of presentations to the voters.
And 12 cents in overall tax impact if all the articles were... All right, so we'll move forward with a vote on the motion to increase the budget of $23 million, 714,941, by $200,000 to the reclamation. So all those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Three, all those opposed? All right, so the motion fails. Motion fails, three to nine with Joe, Kelly, and Jerry in favor. Okay, all right. Further discussion or a motion on the article as presented?
I'll make a motion to move forward Article Six as amended.
Wait a minute, don't we have a edit that we needed to make?
Yeah.
As amended.
That was amended, okay.
So the dollar amount should be 23,314,941.
I have, you just said three.
Twenty-three million.
23,714. I believe what you just stated was 314.
Okay, I'm sorry, yes, 714,941.
All right. Okay. So Selectwoman Boyer made the motion, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second from Eileen. All right. Do folks all have further discussion? We'll move to a vote. All right, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All right, we're unanimous. We're unanimous?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Twelve to zero. All right, moving on, we have Article Seven. I'm not sure, I'm not sure if it was last year, the year before, where this change was made, but basically, we need to, the DRA instructed us to have an article on the budget to accept this revenue from the EMS fund, and if we don't do that, then we have to raise that fund from taxation, which I don't think anyone here would be in favor of. So I'll entertain a motion on Article Seven.
Make a motion to move Article Seven.
Motion from Jeff, second from Spencer. Richard, did you have a question?
No.
All right. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All right, we're unanimous, thank you. Twelve to zero. Next article is related to the Fire Department Apparatus Capital Reserve Fund, and the dollar amount is 225,000. Motion or discussion?
I'll move the article.
Great. Motion from Richard, is there a second? You moved to recommend the article, correct?
Yes.
I'll second.
Second from Selectwoman Boyer, further discussion? All right, seeing none. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. All right, we're unanimous, thank you. Twelve to zero. Article Nine is related to $100,000 to be added to the Grassmere Town Hall Capital Reserve Fund, and this, these funds are to come from unassigned fund balance. Discussion or a motion?
I'll move the article for $100,000.
To recommend.
To recommend.
Motion from Richard Fletcher, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Eileen. Further discussion? All right, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Abstain? Do you abstain, Peter?
Yes.
Okay. So we're 11 to zero to one.
What's the reason for the abstention, Peter? What's your reason for the abstention? I didn't have an opinion, I wasn't involved in it. Oh, okay.
All right. Moving on, we have Article Ten dealing with reclamation. I don't think we talked about this.
I'll make a motion to approve Article Ten for recommendation.
I'll second that. Great. All right, further discussion?
Second.
So we had a motion from Kelly, second from Joe.
Thank you.
All right, all those in favor, please raise your hand. We're unanimous, thank y'all. Twelve to zero. Article 11 is the Crispin House, $20,000 that was presented tonight.
I'll move that article.
Motion from Joe?
Second.
Second from Jared. Further discussion? All right, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor of recommendation, please raise your hand. Opposed? We're 11 to one with Richard Mansell. Opposed. All right, Article 12 is $15,000 for Goffstown Main Street. Is there a motion or discussion? Spencer?
Move to recommend Article 12.
All right. Motion from Spencer, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Richard Fletcher. All right, discussion. I think that Crispin's House gives us a lot of financial information. They really went over the shoestring operation that they run there, and just how these funds are used. With Goffstown Main Street, I don't think we're offered as much financial information, and I think the backing of $100,000 that was mentioned tonight brings me concern on this, $15,000. So I'll be voting in opposition to this motion. I've also heard from Main Street business owners that have concerns about the program, and I'll be voting in opposition. Jared?
If, if, Mr. Sheriff, we do not recommend Article 12, will this then go to deliberative session? Or will it be stricken?
Yeah.
It'll still go?
It's a question.
If we don't go without our recommendation, we'll be...
Just to add, I did, I did see a budget from them last year, if I remember, and we didn't see anything from them this year. If for anybody...
Correct, we did see a budget from them last year. I'm standing for my comment.
Mr. Sheriff, can I ask a question?
Yes.
Derek, did they present last year deliberative session on their specific article?
They did present at the deliberative session, and I will just mention, they did present a budget to the select board when they presented to them on the 16th of December. I can get that information to you, but I can't, again, provide that to you tonight, so...
What was the select board's recommendation?
To recommend the $15,000, five to zero to zero.
Thank you. Further discussion? All right, we'll move forward. Motion was to recommend. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Did you have your hand up? For all those opposed? All right, so we're four to eight. I don't want to mess this up. I believe it was Richard Fletcher, Carl, were you in favor?
Yes, I was.
So we have Richard Fletcher, Carl, Kelly, it's Jared, you have your hand up, as well in favor of the article, and rest in opposition, so the recommendation is four to eight.
We need a new motion not to recommend.
Okay, thank you.
I'll move that motion.
I'll second. So the motion is to not recommend, further discussion?
I'll just say that there, there are businesses who had points of contention, people on this board who had questions about the fund that was brought up tonight, which was not in their budget as it is a separate account for them, what do they call it, an endowment?
An endowment.
So I'm happy to let people talk at deliberative about it. I think that there's lots of business owners who have input, people who are involved with their organization. Not that you have to recommend it, but I'm interested to hear what other people have to say based on that information we got tonight.
Thank you. Further discussion? All right, motion is to not recommend. All those in favor, please raise your hand.
Do you need a second on that?
I, I said... To not recommend the article.
It goes to deliberative regardless.
It would go to deliberative, and on the ballot regardless. The recommendation from the Budget Committee?
It's backwards now.
Yes. It needs to be, it needs, the motion needs to pass.
We lost you in a little time warp there for a second there.
All right, so once again, all those in favor of not recommending, please raise your hand. All those opposed? Opposed to not recommending? All right, vote is the same as before. Eight to four, to not recommend. All right. Want to check, Derek, was there any other business?
No, that's it.
All right, before we get going here, I would love to thank this committee for the work done this year, and look forward to seeing you all at deliberative session, and bearing with me as I figure out the chairmanship of this committee here, not a role I saw myself taking, but I thank you for your patience and hard work. So with that, I'll entertain a motion. Motion to adjourn from Jeff.
A second, but can I add a comment?
Yes.
Please all be at deliberative sessions.
All of them.
Please.
All of them.
When's town?
I said sessions, I said plural.
You did plural, yeah.
So...
The town is February 4th, which is a Tuesday.
Yep.
And the school is February 1st, which is a Saturday at ten a.m.
February 4th at what time?
Seven o'clock.
Seven in the auditorium.
In the auditorium.
All right, I lost track of the motion.
It's a motion to adjourn.
I made a second.
Okay. Motion was from Spencer, second from Kelly. All those in favor?